Okay, we'll call to order the Tuesday, March 12th work session for the city of Tenino. All members are here, except for John, I think he's gonna join us. Is he on, not on there yet, or hopefully he'll be joining us here soon. The first thing on the agenda is reviewing the council agenda for this evening. We have, under old business, we're gonna talk a bit, little bit about the VFW memorial wall, splash bash donation we have under new business. We have three separate arts grants to approve, and we have the purchase and sale agreement for the park addition that we'll approve tonight. Council reports. Is there anything else that's, anybody has pressing that they wanna add? Please, we'll do that at the start of the regular meeting. Nothing? Okay. So, the second thing, we're kind of, don't have a lot to talk about tonight on the council priorities. I was gonna bring back some suggestions for the financial stuff, and I didn't get to that, so we'll have to put that off till the next meeting to force some jet suggestions to changes on the, that financial packet that we looked at last week. Sorry about that. I just didn't get to, get to it.
Gee, you were busy, huh?
So...
It's life in the fast lane, Dave.
That's right, a lot of stuff going on. The, something I guess we can talk about a little bit, just something that came up. I don't remember if I talked about this last meeting, about the PSE. Did I tell you about the PSE light bill we got?
Yes.
Yeah, how awful they were, yeah, are, I mean, yeah.
So, yeah, our bill went from, you know, we got this huge back bill for six months for like eight thousand dollars, which six thousand we hadn't paid. But then we just got a regular bill, so it went from four hundred, say five hundred bucks to almost twelve hundred bucks a month.
Remind me again, why, why we had that huge bill that didn't get paid? They didn't...
They, they said that we had been billed incorrectly for a time period, so they went back.
It's amazing to me, yeah, that's amazing.
So, I'm gonna...
Good evening, Jo- John.
I did talk to PSE just for an explanation, to get the explanation of what happened, and this new rate, whatever it is, but I'm gonna reach out, or I did reach out to our local Christine Romf, is her name. I would just like a better explanation, how come our bill, how come they went up so...
And why, where, where was the glitch?
Yeah.
Why all of a sudden did they, they didn't bill us correctly? That doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, me either. I know, I've heard it happen to other people, this residents, you know, where all of a sudden they get this big bill and PSE says, you know, "Oh, we made a mistake, sorry, you owe, you owe us thousands of dollars." But, I mean, I, if it was a ten percent increase or something, I could say, okay, I can understand that, but like four time increase?
Yeah.
Just seems...
Has she got back to you yet?
No, I'm waiting, do you hear back from her?
You know, somebody else you might go, we might make, you might make an appointment with is the Utilities and Transportation Commission.
And see what, okay, yes, that's a good idea.
It's just a commission of like four people, I think. And, and, yeah.
What were the dates on them? Like, how far back?
They charged us, I thought the information we got from them said it was a year long that this increase had happened, that they didn't charge us for, but it seemed like they only charged us for six months, so I don't know if they, it was, happened a year ago, but they only charged us for six months, but, yeah, it sounded like it was at the start of twenty-three when this was supposed to have happened. But again, I just don't get what, the whole, whole idea of putting in those LED lights that we got a grant for many years ago, and they upgraded, was to reduce our cost, you know?
Right, yeah.
So, that was four times, it doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't.
So, we actually, we paid the bill today, 'cause it was due, and if, we'll have to work out, whatever, you know, if we can get some kind of relief, we'll work it out, but we paid it just because it was due, and, you know, I don't wanna get late charges on top of an already ridiculous bill, so, I'll keep working with PSE, hopefully get a better explanation and understanding of what happened there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
Did you hear me, John, talking about the street lighting bill? Yeah, okay. Did you have anything, you want, comments about that, or anything? Any ideas or thoughts?
No, the problem, the problem I see with it, it's on their end, and they don't care. Of course, whenever PSE makes some kind of mistake, it's always the consumer that has to pay for it.
It's true.
Our money, they mistake our money. So, in this case, they're affecting half of our population, just on the two we're in? That's how many people they're, they're influencing right now.
Yeah.
That's their money, it's not ours.
So, yeah.
That's right.
So, we'll keep working on that, and hopefully, hopefully we'll get a, get some kind of relief, but I have, don't have a lot of faith, but we'll, we'll try. Something else, I guess we can just talk about before we get to the regular agenda and make any decisions, is the, the memorial. We talked about, the VFW presented last week, and Linda called me and said, "Hey, I think I got a great place, that this would be a good place for the memorial." And so, we met over at the park, and I think I showed it to everybody around Jeff, and you know where we're talking about, where the, where the memorial talked about. We went over there and looked at it, and I think several members went over there from the VFW to check it out and make sure the space was okay, and it sounds like, from what I heard, that...
We're happy with it.
We're happy with that.
Yes, well, it's right by the pool, and that's the whole idea.
That's the beverage memorial pool.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll talk about more details, but we'll, we'll get something put together with the council's approval when we get to our regular agenda, we'll move it forward and go from there. It's something they've been working on, like I said, for I think eight years, so I'm very glad that if we can come up with a place for it and we can get moving forward.
I can't tell you how many people, so we're really happy about that.
What else, Jen's going on? We had a meeting about the pool, pool meeting. We're trying to move forward. Jen told me today that we actually have a little bit more in our grant funding left over for that, so we're gonna be able to do a little bit more work there, I think. We won't be so pressured for, you know, trying to get the cost way down, so that's gonna be helpful, I think, with the paving and some of the work inside the pool, especially the showers that need upgrading. We won't have to try to cut costs quite as much as we thought we would, so. And then we got, it sounds like at least tentatively eleven thousand dollars, is that what it was, Jen? Is that kind of a given, or is that, should I not talk about that yet?
What, for what? From the...
For...
The one you told me about, from...
Oh, and, for, from, yeah, that's my, for Hosfield.
Yeah, apparently Hosfield got some grant money, they didn't use all of it.
Eleven hundred dollars.
And so, they asked us if we could use it for any projects here. So, it's eleven thousand dollars.
Eleven hundred, eleven hundred. She said it's eleven...
Eleven hundred.
It's only eleven hundred.
Oh, I thought it was eleven thousand.
Well, you're getting twelve thousand dollars tonight, from the, from the splash bash.
So, it makes me feel good that we got that, a little bit extra money to get that park kinda, or the pool ready for, you know, try to get all the ADA stuff done and without really feeling super pressured on, on the cost, so that's, that's gonna be a relief. And, yeah, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that everything's...
Yeah.
Yeah, they are gonna to, I heard today, take, there's a tree that fell and smashed the covered area at the pool, you know, where that little covered area?
Oh, you're kidding?
No, it's like every time we walk in there, there's another, another tree down or something. So, I think what we're talking about now is taking it down, tearing it down, 'cause it's, yeah, we've talked to the...
You mean the...
That covered area, kinda right by the kiddie pool.
Okay, not the, not the pool cover?
No, the, the cover, covered area for sitting.
A little cabana.
Cabana, yeah, sorry. But anyway, so, yeah, we're gonna just make some, take that thing out.
And Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, our meeting with Troy this morning, didn't they get some picnic tables or, or other...
That's what they're getting the check for tonight. That, in the works, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have some picnic tables, and I think some...
There's, there's...
Covered areas, so they can have some shade.
There's an attachment on our agenda that tells what, everything that we're giving, we're donating.
What else do we got going on? Trying to think of any, Heather. Significant, Jen, do you think of anything else that we can chat about that's...
I have a few things in my report, but I'll wait till...
To the reports?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, let's just go into reports then, we can probably get them all knocked out by the time we start our regular meeting.
Good idea.
Tell me to do George's report? Oh, oh, you gotta lie.
We'll start with outside agencies, Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Hi, Mayor Waterson, Councilmember Godovak, I will not be able to attend the meeting tonight. Here are my reports. Chamber of Commerce, the Tenino area Chamber of Commerce, next meeting will be the evening on March twentieth at five thirty PM at the Sandstone Cafe. Featured speaker is Daryl Murrow, the lead trainer for the Thurston Economic Development Council. The Economic Development Council report is the next EDC board meeting, March twenty-seventh. South Thurston Economic Development Initiative, Steady, their next meeting is this Friday, March fifteenth, eight AM to nine thirty AM at Rainier City Pizza and Burgers. Thanks, George.
Anything for steady? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I understood that one.
You did study, okay. Arch Commission.
I don't think anybody meant...
VCB, I don't think there's anybody here, South Thurston Fire, if you're gonna, you could make sure your little green light's on there. Thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Where it says push. I'm a trained professional. My name is Chris Graham, Lieutenant for South Thurston. Chief Shafrin asked me to come in and say hi to you guys, give a little bit of a report. Unfortunately, couldn't make it today. So, he kinda had a few things, gave me a little bullet points of things he wanted me to discuss, and what I'm gonna hit first is the calls so far. We're seventy-one days in with three hundred and sixty-five calls. Sixty percent of those calls are EMS, forty percent are, we call them fire, but there's a lot of different categories within that fire, trees down, that kinda stuff, lift assists. We're doing well on that end of things, we're working on our pre-fire, not inspection, pre-fire evaluations of buildings. So, we, I think someone came in and gave you guys a presentation on the first due software, takes a picture of the building, we can put where the power's at, there's propane, that kinda stuff, and so, we're going through all the businesses and marking out all the hazards. And it's really more for us, so if we have to go to a structured fire within the city, we know that some buildings in town here have basements and some don't, so, and those are one of those things that we worry about the most, especially if we gotta go fight fire in it. The one thing I would ask for you guys, and I know you guys do a really good job talking to the community, is really pushing the Knox box for each of the bill, each of the businesses out here. There's a vast majority of the businesses here that don't have a Knox box, and what that is, a little metal box, black, it's got red on it. I got a key on my engine I can get into, open it up. Thing is, is some of these buildings out here are beautiful and they're old, and I got, I got crews that would love to tear into doors, and I don't wanna break doors if I don't have to, so, this allows us to get into the building, especially if it's a false alarm on an automatic fire alarm, we're not having to force doors, okay? So, if you guys, while you're in the community, if you can talk to the business owners and talk to them, let me know as well, Dave got some my number, you can, I can come down and give a flyer. We're also handing it out in the pre-fire inspection portion as well, to let the community know that, why it's important, or at least the business owners.
And they can go to the fire department to get their permission on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If anybody's listening, yep.
It's been presented to the chamber.
Okay.
And the Sandstone has them, I believe that Jade at Kodiak Room, I think she's got one. Biggest objection is that you won't share it with the police, you won't give the police a key.
Yeah, that's not, so, they have a Knox box program for law enforcement, right?
I know, but the people can't afford both two...
Right, but it's not our rules, it's the Knox box that says...
But, but it would've been ni- it would be nice to get together and see if you, you know, just as a cooperation.
Absolutely, and, and the other side of that too is, because of our partnership with the, with the city, law enforcement also knows us very well, they can call us and we can get that access too. That's not, you know, not something that, you know, wouldn't, you know, be available, you know, especially if there's a potential alarm, we can give them the key, tell them how to open the box, and they can do their, their business, right? So, we definitely can work around that, I think everything's workable, four square miles, I think we can make anything happen, right? We got four people on EMT class right now, Thurston County Medical One, they're doing well, they're about, I think, week three into the program, and then in the fall, we'll have right around five to seven new volunteers going through the fire academy. So, other than that, it's about the only bullet points he gave me, is there any questions from you guys that I can maybe try to answer?
Not really question, more of a statement.
Sure.
Still, it would be nice just for us to know city, if that's possible, when they, you know, if you have numbers, number of calls in the city versus the county.
Yeah, so we've gone through our, our programming to change the specific coding on that. It's like moving mountains, so we have zone codes, so we've tried to incorporate them, and they're not necessarily capturing, so we have to get ahold of TCOM to get those as well, but I can really say that, you know, the good majority of the calls, I'd almost say probably about forty percent of the calls are within the, the city limits, as you, as you will.
I thought at one time you looked at, it's close to fifty percent.
Yeah, and it, it varies, right? Because we don't have a lot of trees to block the road, but when we get a windstorm and we get fifteen calls outside the city for removing trees, that changes the, the average. But, yes, I appreciate that, we are currently working on it, and I'll, I will have it so broke down, Dave, you will not even know what to do with yourself.
I'm, I like numbers.
ALS, BLS, fires, NDAs, you tell me what you want, I'll, I'll figure it out and I'll get it for you, okay?
No, huge deal, I just, yeah, at some point, it'd be nice just to kinda keep us alert to what's happening within the city limits versus the rest of the county, but...
Sure, yeah, and, of course, we could, we'll, we'll do what we can, and we'll, we'll see you.
I'm sure you kinda have an idea in your head, so, like you said, it's...
Yeah, yeah, in my head, it's, I'm only a third of the shifts, right? So, then the other two thirds are, are, you know, having to cover the shifts and, and calls, so. But, yeah, I will definitely figure out a way that we can isolate that down into just the city and give you that. Anything else?
Thanks for stopping in.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate you coming in. Let's see, I'll check these off in case somebody comes back and... Library, museum, I don't, Tenino, none of those three are here. Committees, Civil Service Commission? I don't think they've had a meeting. Facade Improvement Grant, you have anything?
Actually, yes. Landen something contacted City Hall, and I talked to him on the phone, he's with the Masonic Hall, and they're applying for a facade grant to replace the casings around their windows and paint them, and, so, they've applied, and I got a question about whether or not Casey, who owns the feed store, if she can apply for another grant for the old hotel.
Oh, okay. Like spruce up the front of it?
It's a separate building, but it's, it's owned by the same person, but it is a separate building. So, I, I said I'll have to check in on the tech, and I haven't had a chance to check it yet, but, sorry.
What does you wanna do with that, Linda, what does you wanna do with that, that side?
She's going to lease it out, there's two thousand square feet, and she wants to lease that as a separate building. The old hotel.
Yeah, I've been upstairs in that part, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I'm gonna go in, and as soon as she gets a chance, she's gonna give me a call, so, yeah.
You'll, you'll be amazed by the size of the rooms.
Well, it, I, I didn't think it was two thousand square feet, to tell you the truth, but it is.
It's bigger than it looks, yeah.
Yeah, she's hoping to lease it to a business, that would be wonderful.
Yes, it would. Thank you.
Okay, Finance Committee, we didn't have any meeting, we didn't really have anything to discuss, so we haven't got any updates on our, our review, so, we're gonna wait till they get the twenty twenty-three budget reconciliation done, probably before we meet again. Planning Commission, I think they got a meeting coming up, just tomorrow.
Thursday?
Yep.
Planning is tomorrow.
Planning's tomorrow. Sorry. And I didn't see anything on their agenda, I'm hoping that they're not starting to talk about the comprehensive plan update, 'cause it would be nice for the public to know about that before they...
The comprehensive, yeah. Well, they're, it's supposed to be, isn't it supposed to be publicized?
Should be starting, yeah.
You know, there's, what, there's supposed to be two public hearings?
Yeah, so, anyway. Public Safety Committee? Did I hear somebody say that you, they met?
Uh, no, we haven't met yet.
Okay. Public Works Committee?
Had a meeting today with Troy, and he said that they're working on the pool, so that they hope to be able to open in for the weekends in, starting in June. Trees have been taken out by the pond, and they'll be seeing about getting the fountain put in, just so the water circulates. Right, right. Doesn't... Well, it'll be interesting to see it, yes, yeah. Public Works would like to see on budgets, probably not this year, but maybe next year, additional monies programmed in for baseball fields. I think Jessica just applied for a grant.
Yep.
At the athletics field, and she just applied yesterday, or today. She doesn't think they'll get it. Well, that's not a good attitude. Yeah. Just because of the... You just have to be more positive. She did it, but she said, you know, it's a long shot, because they're contending with Seattle and Tacoma. Maybe we need, maybe we need a little, someone higher up to do a little influencing all the work up. And with some of the dirt from the egg park, they'll be leveling the, out and fixing up the soccer fields. Oh, good. Because, right now, he says, none of the teams wanna play on them, they wanna go to the school and play, but they can't always do that, so they're trying to get them fixed, so they'll be used.
Well, the problem with that whole area over there is those gophers, that, you know, you level it out, and the next day, gophers have invaded every place, and it's about to the same, it's a never-ending problem.
They're moles, they're not gophers.
They said that it's, um, the drain...
Moles.
It's drainage, part of it's drainage, because she's, they said that there was rock and, and the, the other stuff that is in the ground doesn't drain good, or drains too fast, I'm not sure which. The bathrooms that were just done have already been vandalized. Yeah. Yeah, so now they'll be locked up every night at seven. One of the officers is trying to work on finding out who it is.
Yeah, and we're trying to, I think what we're, sorry, did I interrupt you? On the bathrooms, we're gonna have, since Public Works goes home like at three thirty or something, so we can keep them open to seven, we're planning, the officers have agreed to stop by at seven o'clock and lock them up, and they have my number, so if they get busy or something, I'm just a block away, so I'm gonna get a key so I can make sure they're locked up. But, yeah, it's unfortunate that we spent thousands of dollars, and within a few days, luckily, they just broke some of the, I think, the towel holders, they didn't damage the, you know, the expensive things.
Yeah, actual big heavy, now they're studying that. So, dispensers.
Yeah, very frustrating, because, yeah, it's just, can, I hope we can be better as a community, and somebody speak up, somebody's gotta know who's doing all this, and be nice if somebody would speak up and, but, yeah, very frustrating.
And then Troy's working on water rights, because it's such a long process, so he has started on it. Public Works would like to know how or when they can get a message out about water conservation for, for the public. And that was about it.
One of the issues with the water rights is we're bumping up against the limit of our water rights, and, and we still have the comprehensive plan and, and growth we're supposed to do, so it's, it's gonna be a...
I'll just add on to those real quickly, since we're just in water rights, we have actually got two proposals. One, Mike Marshall brought to us, it was for ten thousand dollars to start looking into, you know, what our rights are now, where we need to go to figure out how to, where we need to start looking for other water rights, because our basin apparently is probably one of the most difficult in the state to get any water rights in, so it's very complicated. And, and then we have another one, another proposal from a local company, company that's working with TransAlta on their water rights. They're an Olympia-based company, and they kind of already know quite a bit about our, what the city has, they've already looked into, I guess you can see it all online, what rights we have.
Oh, I'm sure you can.
Their, their proposal is for seven thousand dollars to start kinda doing the same thing, and so, I'm gonna bring those to the next meeting, we can make a decision if we wanna kinda start moving forward with having a company kinda looking at what we have and looking at options for us. I think conservation is gonna be a big one, because it's probably cheaper to help people pay to conserve water than it is to get water rights, so to the extent that we can conserve, yeah, I think we should start looking at, like I said, plans, plans to...
Conservation, you know, like, don't let water, don't let water run out of a hose, make sure you have a nozzle when you're washing your vehicle, so it's not just running, not watering in the daytime your lawn, showerheads, reduced water shut, you just wanted to put that out there so the public's aware of it.
Just give them, yeah, some ideas to, yeah.
Renew their, they probably already know it, but then they forget about it.
Yeah.
But we send flyers out for that too, right? Every spring?
Do what?
Don't we, don't we send flyer, flyers out?
I don't think so.
I don't, never sent it one out.
With the water bill, you mean? It's not a bad idea. Well, that's, Jessica?
We're planning on doing that next, build it for that.
I can tell you that the school district and probably our park are huge users of water, because they irrigate, and I think we talked about this before.
Yes, we did.
And they're aware, they're aware that they use a lot of water, and I think they're looking at ways to, you know...
Well, I just think everybody has to do their part, that's all.
We can all do a little bit, it'll help, yeah.
Everybody, not just, right, not just a few. Yeah.
So, yeah, that's where we're at with the, the water, and, okay, staff, Chief of Police, is he, did he send something, or didn't get anything? Public Works, I don't, uh...
Who's did that?
They may be here later. City Planner, nothing, Code Enforcement, Park Specialist, that you're here?
I'm here.
She might as well do all of them while she's up there. Museum, yeah.
You can get mine.
That's okay. Um, I mean, there's a lot of things going on, but really, I just wanted to mention that I put out a, a park survey. The survey is, you know, got a number of purposes, but one of the things, you know, as we do a park master plan, we need to get feedback from the community, and so, to give us a little bit of direction, and statistically, it'll give us arguments that we can give when we're applying for grants to fund some of these things that the community's behind it. So, I thought, since I've got eighty-seven of them so far, and I'm hoping for a lot more, but I think eighty-seven kinda starts giving you a trend, I can give you, I've charted all out on an Excel spreadsheet, so I can kinda give you the highlights of some of the answers that we've gotten. So, I had an open-ended question about what brings you to the park, and out of eighty-seven, fifty-four said that it was hiking and trails, so, and walking, basically, and then the playground was next, and then festivals. Improvements, they love all the improvements mostly, playground, accessibility trail, and the pond, the fence around the pond are the favorites. Have you faced any barriers to using our park or facilities that we can improve? This was your suggestion of a question. A lot of people said no, a lot of people didn't answer, but there were some trends and some... But there were some trends in some of the answers and they were things that we're already addressing, which is nice. So like the locked restrooms and can we improve the quality of the restroom? Um, and we have been keeping them open and locking at night. But night being when the sun goes down, so people, so during the hours that the park is supposed to be open, they should have restrooms. The number two thing was older kids, uh, not making it safe for younger kids, being too aggressive on the playground, using foul language around little kids, and various other activities that they didn't appreciate. And then how long projects take, like, the pool was brought up several times. But, you know, we'd like to be open, but it's not time to be open yet, so, um, hopefully they will be delighted this summer. Other things, soggy conditions of the fields, they'd like little, more little kid toys. Bees on the hillside trail, we've got a plan to tackle the, the, uh, Railroad ties is where the bees make nests every year and we want to tear all those railroad ties out. They're rotten. And the, that hillside is a mess and it needs to recover. There are other trails that go up there, so they don't need to go that way. So signage, better marked trailheads, um, transients came up a couple times. More garbage cans, we always put out more garbage cans in the summer. But anyways, a lot of these, there were little, uh, one-time things like, uh, that we had, that sparked a discussion because we hadn't really thought about it, like the shelters. You know, people throw kid parties in there and they invite grandma and she can't walk over the uneven ground to get out to the shelter. So realizing, oh, okay, we might need to think about some kind of sidewalk or something eventually that connects up to some of the shelters in the park. So just little accessibility issues. So moving on, uh, and eventually I'll get you, I can give you a full printout of this if you ever want to look at it. Athletic facilities, the number one thing people voted for was they liked the idea of basketball. So, um, a lot of people in the sports and the museum section of the, of the survey just skipped it. You can tell that wasn't their area of interest. You can tell when somebody starts answering when they answer things like, I like the accessibility trail and the history displays. Well, that's, they're, they're probably older and and if they answer, we love sports and cycling, well, their answers, you're gonna start seeing a pattern in how they answer everything. But we still had thirty-one people vote for basketball hoops and soccer was second. What kind of trails are you most likely to utilize? Seventy people said the hiking trails. So our park is popular for walking and hiking. Cycling came in second at forty-one. Camping, what are you most likely to do? Most people said tent camping. I mean, that's kind of what most people have are tents. Uh, and number two was cabins, so that is kind of coming out as a popular idea. Only eleven people said full hookup RV and ten people said dry hook RV. And a lot of people, it was the same person answering both of those because they could select more than one. What amenities would you prioritize in the campground? Restrooms and showers. That was, that was the biggest one. Um, there were some people who said, we don't want camping. We worry about tents. So, uh, for all the people who said tent camping was their favorite, there was like five people who said we shouldn't have tent camping because it, it welcomes people to just come and stay and not leave and, and management can be an issue. So, um, yeah, I respect their concerns about that. But a drinking fountain, potable water, um, there were actually a lot of really good ideas as we go further down the list, but they're like onesie twosies, so, but things to consider. What improvements would you prioritize at the quarry pool? Bathhouse and changing rooms got forty-seven votes. Right behind it was seating areas at forty-six. Uh, shade area forty-one, so places to sit and lounge were definitely, um, the big ones. Swim dock was at thirty-two votes, so that's still pretty popular. And I was surprised concessions and rentals was something people also liked. Not in a huge quantity, but we got twenty-two people wanting concessions. And sixteen people voting for rentals, being like renting a chair or renting floaties.
Can, can, um, uh, groups like the cheerleaders or do the concessions?
Yeah, so we even talked about like, just kind of spitballing ideas, that maybe that's something we should consider this year, doing the kind of concessions that don't require a kitchen. So all of the low-risk things prepackaged. So like you could maybe get a, a group to take it for however many weeks, give them, give them a month. We'd use our concession rate-
Well, I think that they, they, they do serve like hot dogs and hamburgers.
Yeah, but we don't have, um, the, the facilities for that yet. So right now we'd have to start with things like chips and granola bars and pop and those kinds of things. I think those would be very popular, uh, fruit snacks. I mean, you know, you could come up with quite a few things that people, when they're spending all day at the pool, they get thirsty and they want to, might have some money burning a hole in their pocket, so it could be a good fundraiser for-
Somebody.
For somebody. Let's see, day pass was far, far outweighed, season pass. That was just a curiosity question on our part. Seventy, seventy-four people said they'd use a day pass over a season pass. But still eighteen season passes got voted on. That would be a good, um, thing to sell. The quarry natural area, so that's right next to the pool, still in the quarry. We always keep that locked. And so this, we were floating the idea of if we opened it up, what would you want it used for? Well, universally, it seemed like, not universally, but the people who answered the section, uh, fifty-eight of them wanted it open, like just a picnic area that you could go into, so very basic. Some of those, um, also liked the idea of a gazebo in there, so thirty-seven people said gazebo. Thirty-six people liked the idea of youth fishing. And, um, thirty-three people, so these are all kind of around the same, not too far apart in votes, um, like the idea of it being open for weddings and, and, you know, so you could rent it and have your wedding there. Which would be cool because then they could also rent the quarry house and kind of have a whole thing, so that could be another income thing. And a lot of people didn't see a conflict between youth fishing and weddings because they'd vote for the same thing, but you could feasibly have a fishing season and a wedding season. So certain times of year we would not do weddings and we would just have it for fishing. Because you wouldn't want a kid to show up with this fishing pole and find out there's a wedding going on in there. So we'd have to, we'd have to figure out the logistics on that. The Tenino Depot Master Plan, the number one thing people voted for was an archive and research room that was open to the public. So we don't have space for that right now.
Oh, boy, that would be nice.
But that was, that was a thing. People also, wherever you say picnic, everyone's like, yes, picnic. So a picnic area was one. Um, the third vote was quarry pool viewing area, so if there's a way to, the quarry's right behind it. And I've had, uh, some landscape architects point out one time, if you moved, like, took out a couple of these trees right here and maybe you had a little viewing area, you could have a very nice view from the museum. Kind of incorporating the museum into the park instead of the way it's sort of closed off in its own little.
Right.
So, um, just planning the grounds out better possibly. Would you like to see more public art in the park? Forty-seven people said yes, but twenty people said no. And some of the no's were very adamant about it. They're like, please, no, no more art in the park.
Really?
Yeah. So, uh, so that's sixty, that, and that was a one or the other vote. You couldn't use votes. So that's sixty-seven people who chimed in on that, um, out of eighty-seven. Then we just had open-ended, what are your ideas? Um, a lot of these are very like low-hanging fruit or something we're kind of planning on doing, so that's fun. So more cameras came up, uh, multiple times. Planning the new park addition, we're, we're in the middle of that. A scavenger hunt of finding the art. You could even incorporate some of these, the metal banner art and some of the art around town and the park, and it could be an activity that we post on our webpage that people can, can engage in. A stonework maze, well, that's a little more work, but I'm like, I don't know, that might be kind of neat. I've been on, I've walked through those before. Um, they're usually just on the ground and then you walk through the maze. A youth resident photography contest called Beauty of Our Park. A walk-up coffee stand run by youth and concessions. Well, if we ever get our concession bathhouse building that we'd like to have, you could have concessions out in the park.
On both sides.
We'd have, we'd have a window that faced out into the park, so I don't know, it would have coffee stand, but it's, it's kind of low-hanging fruit. Uh, more benches along the paved trails, we, we've talked about doing that. And we have some benches left over. Improve woodland trails, we have plans for that. Uh, more raptor, bird, duck houses and wildlife interpret, interpretive info signs. That's something we can partner with Friends of the Park on because they did the, the raptor and birdhouses that we have now. And we've got quite a lot of them. I don't know if people know about them. And interpretive signs, you know, we, we can do some that are not history-based. We could do some wildlife ones. Murals we're planning, uh, horse trails we're planning, um, summer fairs and carnivals got plans. Native flower garden, we actually have one already by the museum. Um, some of the big dream things was somebody wanted a youth athletic facility, like they mentioned gymnastics. They'd like to just see more opportunities and that way, that's kind of a not low-hanging fruit. This is more of a dream. A sound system at the ball fields. They mentioned we used to have one and I, I didn't know we did. Livestreamer mini-trains. Somebody, um, and we've actually talked about this one time is, uh, you could get those little trains. They're about this tall. You can sit on them. You get a track and it can go all the way around your park and it's like a tourism, it's like a huge tourism draw. And, uh, people will actually bring in their trains to run your track, um, is one of the ways-
That was a feature in a, at, I'm trying to think of the name of the lake, Island Lake, I think it was in Kitsap County when I was a kid.
Oh, yeah.
And we would go and there, there was a train that went around the-
They have, they have a, still Kitsap live steamers is a thing and I went up and rode the trains one time. And, um, anyway, we have a depot, so it would be kind of fun, but that's just a dream. And more shelters that are like maybe Miller Savanias or Olympias or something that has like a little kitchen in it is one of the dream category suggestions. So anyway, that's some of the feedback that we got. Um, just thought y'all should, should know about it. And that's my report.
City attorney, I think they're gonna invite him to come to one of our meetings just, uh, I haven't seen one of them.
Just one of them, yeah, yeah. Sure.
I haven't talked to him about it, but we need to schedule that. Clerk Treger.
He should come to our, uh, retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. Uh, we had the ag park pre-con last week for the remaining TI, which is tenant improvements. Um, that is gonna be starting for the north building at the end of the month. We have a pool walkthrough with the CDBG scheduled for this Thursday. They have asked us, they've let us know that they have that leftover funds for the Hoss Field project and if the city would like to add the $1,117 to our pool grant. Uh, we will be receiving an amended contract soon adding that amount. We also have Family Fund Day planned in June. I think we're gonna hopefully have a ribbon cutting that weekend as well. We kind of left them out of the ribbon cutting for the quarry house. So I think it would be really important to have people that helped fund all of the improvements there. So they're excited about that. They said, let us know, let them know and they will happily attend. Been working on reimbursements for the SLCGP grant. We're about seventy percent complete with the cyber upgrades. Um, they're working on the police department now, but City Hall's been done for a little bit. Annual report for 2023 is coming along. That is due May twenty-ninth. Met with the secretary, I'm sorry, met with the State Auditor's Office and our city audit is set to officially begin in May. This is an audit for 2019 through 2022, so it's a four-year audit. As everyone knows, I've been spending months, um, getting them all the things they need and they're finally ready and we're finally on their calendar, so good stuff. Sorry, at the end of the day, I received an email from AWC letting us know that they have a Small City Connector coming up in Napavine on April twenty-fourth. It's a Wednesday evening in, at Ramblin' Jack's Ribeye. It's a free event dinner for city elected officials and senior city staff. Um, the focus this year will be emergency management, including preparing and responding to emergencies. So if any of you would like to attend, let me know and I will get you registered. I will also send an email out tomorrow with this information.
Guess it's me next. I mentioned last meeting, I, I-
I mentioned last meeting, I believe, about the Habitat for Humanity and their interest in a couple laws there. I, I reached out to our attorney just to make sure how we need to go about, uh, because it's gonna be two years before they can actually get to it, what kind of agreement we needed before we started, you know? And so I sent a note to Habitat for Humanity saying, hey, what, what do you want to do as far as committing to this? Since it's gonna be a few years, so we can start that land transfer because that was part of it. And we need a commitment from them before we can kind of do that.
Right.
Uh, I haven't heard back from them yet, but I have reached out to them to kind of get some kind of agreement that we, we can both sign as far as committing to that project and, uh, then we can start that land transfer.
Happy about that.
Let's see, what else did we do? The, I think we've talked about this a little bit too, Miles Sand and Gravel. I think the, the fire department's still having problems trying to find a piece of property big enough to, uh, to build a station on, especially out there with the gopher where they were looking. There's a gopher, gopher found out there, so that complicates things. They're trying to work with, uh, Miles Sand and Gravel to get a little piece of their property, uh, kind of right there at the entrance to the gravel pit. I think they're still, still working with them. I don't think they have anything done, but, uh, that's kind of their next, excuse me, best place, but I think ultimately that the fire department's gonna be asking to be able to use eminent domain eventually if they can't find a place.
That's probably what they're gonna have to do.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult there, you know, you want them to stay close to the town, close to town, but there isn't really any big parcels that-
There'll be a huge uproar if they don't stay close to town, you know?
So that, that, I've told them that several times, you know, if we can't, we can't have them responding from clear down in, uh, you know? So, uh, I'm hoping that we, they can work out something with Miles Sand and Gravel, but, uh,
That was, that was actually, they're not in, in the city limits, so. Are they? This part that he's talking about?
Well, even if they're not, they're close to the city limits. I mean, even if the station is right, it's still in a good spot, yeah.
It's a lot closer than the other spot that they, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't think they have to be in the city limits, but-
Well, no, no. I was thinking they were talking about, never mind.
Yeah, that's okay.
Mayor, I think one of the ideas with the fire department out there is maybe using some of the ag park land as, as part of that. If Miles couldn't, we're only, Miles be able, Miles may be able to give perhaps the fire truck access, but not the land, and we could have the land and, you know, if the park isn't fully developed.
I don't know about that.
No, I don't either.
I know at one point they had talked about that, but I think as the plan's gone on, I don't know if that's feasible anymore.
I don't know either.
So we'll, we'll, like I said, they're gonna work with Miles and see what happens there, but, uh, yeah. It's a tough, uh, tough situation. We, I think I talked about this a little bit, uh, got notice about the possibility of energy efficiency, some grants for low-income people to do some efficiency upgrades. I talked with the county. They're doing a plan for the county, uh, where they have pre-approved contractors, they have processes for getting contractors paid when they do these things. So we're looking at kind of adding us on to their plan, so it's, so we don't have to do our own thing, you know, as far as payments of people that want, I think it'd be more efficient. Uh, I did say I kind of believe that, uh, to some extent, uh, local control is kind of important to people, you know? So, uh, maybe we can have local contractors added on there, especially trying to use people local to do some of this work. I think would be valuable to, uh, to try to pursue if they're not, not already part of that. But, uh, we'll work on it, at least for the billing part of it would make it much more simpler if the contractors that do this work could just apply to one place and have a process for reimbursing them for these things. So we're working on-
Well, that's the way it's always been in the past, I believe, like through block grants and that kind of thing. It's always been a countywide thing, I thought, you know?
Yep. Attended the Tenino Firefighters Crab Feed and got auctioned off, uh, that's kind of uncomfortable. That's uncomfortable, that's uncomfortable for me.
Well, you're gonna, it's gonna happen.
I don't, I don't like sitting there being, being auctioned off.
No, it's going to happen again in June, Dave. So get used to it. It's going to happen again in June.
Anyway, it went well. Sheriff Sanders was there and did a couple, auctioned off a couple ride-alongs with the sheriff, and I told people I couldn't, I don't know if I can compete, compete with that one, you know? But it went well, I think. So anyway, that, that event was well attended. I was very surprised how many people were at that crab feed. It was impressive. The food bank, I've talked about the solar project possibly there that we're working on to help reduce their utility costs. We met with a planner. He came out, looked at the facility to try to at least get the initial, what they can do there as far as some renewable energy to help reduce the cost on the roof of the plant there. Looks, I think they were.
They're going to be able to?
I think they're going to be able to. So they're going to put a proposal together for funding, how much it's going to cost, and then we'll go through and see if we can get some money to do that.
Oh, gotta be able to get some grants from that.
Yeah, I think, I think we're pretty good. I think the cost is fairly small, because it's a small facility compared to some of these grants people are asking for, you know, half a million dollars or more, and this is probably going to be a, you know, fairly smaller, yeah. So they feel very good that we'll be able to, to get a grant. And I think it's, it's not a lot of money savings, but for the food bank that does everything on donations, basically, it's, you know, if you're saving three hundred, four hundred dollars a month, that's a, that's a, adds up to a lot for the food bank. So I'm hoping that will.
Well, how about the wastewater plant? Are we, are we going to look into doing the same thing there?
Yeah. We, we talked about this when I had a meeting with the state commerce, and this first, there's another grant round coming up after this first one, and the one at the food, food warehouse is pretty simple compared to what it would be. So we said, let's try to just this first round, since it's coming up quickly, try to get that one done, and then for the next round, start looking at the wastewater treatment plant, and also for the well pumps also, because they're another huge, huge cost, is pumping water anyplace is very expensive. So those two are, are one of our big, two of our biggest utilities is the wastewater plant and pumping water.
When they do those estimates on solar, do they tell you how much it'll save?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It will tell us, yeah. It will be very detailed. So we'll bring that before you, just before we do anything, but yeah, when they give the report, I will definitely bring it and kind of show you what, what they're looking at doing. It's, it'll be pretty impressive, I think, for the small facility. I had a meeting with Sheriff Sanders a couple days ago, just to kind of, I've met him before, but never really sat down and talked to him, and I just basically wanted to talk about, make sure that everything's working well, things are going well with our police department, and just make sure that, you know, sometimes I felt like with the sheriff's department, we've had these ups and downs.
Well, we had for years, but I think it's, it's smoothed, it's smoothed out now, and I think.
And I just explained to him, I want to keep it that way. I don't want, I don't want any more of these, you know? So I just tried to say that if anything comes up that is causing concern, then reach out to us early and let's fix it. So that went well. I think they appreciated that. Went to the mayor's forum in Yelm last Friday. It's pretty good. We talked quite a bit about water rights and what some of the other cities have gone through, how many years lawsuits were filed. It was a, it was a mess like Tom Water and Lacey getting water rights. So we talked quite a bit about that. We did have a meeting on Monday with emergency, emergency management. We're trying to get back into the whole emergency management plan with the county. They've got a lot of new staff, so they're basically rewriting their whole emergency management plan, so we're going to be involved with that and the fire department and the city, so I think that's a good one. So that's, I think, basically everything since our last meeting.
Okay.
Let's see, got five, six minutes. Be that?
Their meeting is next Monday.
Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Let's see, Solid Waste is doing another campaign on recycling, what can and cannot be recycled. Anything that has food on it basically creates a stain, and then they can't. It contaminates the whole load, so to speak. So they'll be putting flyers out in the building statements. The, one of the top contaminations is plastic bags.
Yep.
Why would they even put plastic bags in the recycle?
They get a, he gave me the number, and it was unbelievable, but he said most of it was in multi-complex dwellings, like apartment buildings. On Saturday, May fourth, is Earth Day. Eleven to two, they have a composting event, and a person can get a half a yard of composting per each vehicle. Instead of bicycles being thrown out and put in the trash and compacted, there's now a bicycle donation station at inner-city transit.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
They're fixing them and giving them to people.
Kids, kids that need bikes, good.
For kids or adults. They'll be educating on organic, organic management law. That was one that was passed before for restaurants, and who's complying, who's not, what they have to do to do that. And any of the orange bags with the logo, with the logo on it can be dumped at the, dumped for free, because those are all the litter pickup and roadside cleanup. And so if anybody is using those or wants to do that, those bags can be.
Now people.
Did they talk at all about styrofoam recycling anymore? Are they?
They have not had a.
Because that is, that's a, that's a real, that's a tough one. That really is.
Once dark closed, they haven't been able to find anybody else to do it. They did find somebody to do, somebody new is doing the yard waste. Brady, Brady Trucking is doing it. So it's taken in, and then they.
Styrofoam and batteries are the two, to me, the, they're a menace, you know, batteries.
There's not a good way to get rid of them.
No, is it possible? At the hotline office, there's a jar like this, and we put all of them in there. It's like three or four years we've been putting batteries in this thing. It's just, it's almost completely full now, but there's no place to take it.
Right.
What kind of batteries? Every kind?
Flashlight, any of them. You're not, you can't put them in the garbage. You're not supposed to put them in the garbage. They're supposed to be recycled, but.
Nobody, nobody does it, yeah.
Nobody does it. I'll have to ask about it.
Got a couple minutes. T com, nine one one, anything? Tonino School Board?
Well, Tonino was out in two the last time we talked for their state tournament, and Supreme Sports is just now starting to pick up, and their next school board meeting is March twenty-fifth.
T R P C, how's your chance, John?
There you go. T P B's calling, morning, T R P C. We passed the new growth limits for the rural area. We got a little pushback on it. I don't think a lot of people understand that. Just because we're going to say we're going to grow this much doesn't mean that's actually going to happen. As you, as you guys have been talking about already, and I've been talking about for years, Lacey's, Lacey's experience, they're twenty years before they finally got water rights, water rights, power, all that kind of good stuff is going to dictate more how we, how rural area grows than what we say is going to grow. And I don't see, see five percent actually being a target that's hit in a, in a very, very long time. But we passed that. It's a, it's a more, to me, it's more worthless. And I call it that because I've been around this a long, and I've seen so many of these things that, that we'd love to be able to do this, but other restrictions can't, because we have all the different departments on fire for each other. There you go.
T P B, anything? Nope. Okay.
I like his background.
Yeah. Are you out hiking?
Pretty cool.
Looks like you're out in the woods there.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's seven thirty, so we can roll right into our regular meeting agenda. So I'll call to order the March twelfth, the regular meeting of the Tonino City Council. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so.
Thank you. Okay, agenda approval.
Move a second.
It's been a motion, a second, to approve the regular meeting agenda for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of minutes, meeting minutes from two twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
I so move.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the March, or February twenty-seventh meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar, the consent calendar consisting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four through March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, consisting of payroll E T E F Ts in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and one dollars and fifty-nine cents, claims checks three two one nine one through three two 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 eight in the amount of ninety-four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, claims checks thirty-two one eighty-seven through thirty-two one ninety, voided due to printing error, for a grand total of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents. And let's see, there is a cannabis liquor license for the Sandstone, Sandstone Cafe and Quarry Bar, excuse me.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the consent calendar and liquor cannabis license for Sandstone Cafe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, executive session, nothing, presentations, nothing. Public hearing, public comments, excuse me. Does anybody have a public comment? No? I can't believe that.
Hit on Facebook.
I thought that's the only reason people came. Okay, no comments. You'll have another chance. We'll give you another chance at the end. Old business, the V F W Memorial Wall. Last, last meeting, V F W came in and did a presentation on the memorial wall. We had some discussion. After we met, councilperson Goodeback called me up and said, hey, I got an idea of a great place that this wall could go. And we walked over to the park, and I think everybody's seen it. There's a kind of a triangle space over there that would fit the memorial wall as we just, as I just discussed, and Linda and I thought it was a great idea, but I wanted to bring it up for discussion. I hope if we get support for that, that we'll reach some kind of agreement with the V F W to move forward, forward with that, to bring to the next meeting. So is there any kind of, if anybody wanted to discuss that location, or have any concerns, or support, or?
There's something that's been a long time coming, it's about time.
Yep, I'm very glad. When I talked to the V F W, you know, they even mentioned they've had people pass away that have been working on this for a long time, and it would, it would mean a lot to them, I know, and it would mean a lot to me to get this project to moving forward and for the V F W. They, they deserve this. So everybody kind of okay with moving forward with some kind of agreement with them to use that space?
Should we make a motion?
I don't think, I'll just bring something back. If everybody seems to be okay with it, I'll bring back some formal agreement with them, so we, we can approve that.
At the next meeting, then?
Yes. So I'll get with, I'll get with you, and we'll draft up something with our attorney to make sure we're all on the same page and know exactly how we're going to move forward. And I appreciate all the work and the patience you've had. I know it's been a long time, so I very much appreciate your hanging in there and keeping, keeping us, keeping our feet to the fire to get this done. If it's okay with the council, can, is it okay if Keith speaks first or second?
Sure, go ahead, Keith.
Well, Frank Hicks is.
Sorry, yeah.
You know the drill, Keith. Said you know the drill.
Lights on?
Keith Phillips, four four nine Fourth Avenue in Tonino. I just want to say thank you to, to the council and their movement towards this, this, the fruition of this monument. And we have a lot to thank for Frank Hicks, who stayed with this project, stayed with this project, and stayed with this project. And I have uncles, my father's name was on the list, and I have uncles on that list, and so it means a lot to our family. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's a very emotional thing for, for members, and yes, I appreciate it very much. Okay, so I'll bring back something next meeting. We'll try to get something put together that we can approve and get this thing going. New business, Splash Bash donation for Quarry Pool. The, there's a motion to accept the donation for the Splash Bash.
So moved.
Second.
So it's been, hold on a second. We'll let, we got it, we got it on the floor. Let's let her, let her speak, and we'll see exactly what we're, we're accepting here.
Well, I'd like, I'd like you to step down, mayor, down here, too.
Mayor has to step down.
Step down, I'll make it two months.
So I'm Joyce Worrell, and I'm the past chair of the Splash Bash Committee for several years, and we've worked hard through this time. We appreciate the city's contributions to what you've done to, to help us with our Splash Bash Committee to improve our pool. This is a letter from Park Foundation of Thurston County, and Park stands for Parks, Art, Recreation, and, can't read that.
Culture.
Culture. So it's to you, mayor, Dave Waterson, City of Tonino, regarding Splash Bash funding for the Quarry Pool operations. Dear Mayor Waterson, the Tonino Splash Bash Committee and the Park Foundation of Thurston County are pleased to give the City of Tonino the attached check for twelve thousand dollars for the last Tonino Splash Bash auction, which was a while ago. This is a grant of funds and support the city, to the City of Tonino's operation of the City of Tonino Quarry Pool during the summer of twenty twenty-four. The Park Foundation of Thurston is happy to provide a way for citizens of Tonino and the Tonino Splash Bash Committee to be able to contribute funds so the City of Tonino Quarry Pool can be open this summer. Yay. Yeah. And, and then the letter is signed by James Reddick, and it is to Pam Light, our chair. That's your letter, and there's your money. Spend it wisely. We haven't told you yet how we want you to spend it, but we, we might, we might have a list there. So thank you very much, sir.
Both of you. I really appreciate the work that you do. It'd be hard to run that pool without this money. It's, you know, it's.
Well, it's a, it's a little, it's a little bit of help in the very enormous amount that it takes to do it. And on top of that, I would like to introduce the new chair of our Splash Bash Committee. This is Pam Light. I, I, I told her I'd either kill her, or she could stay alive and be chair. So she decided she'd stay alive and be chair of our, of our new Splash Bash, and she's going to tell a little bit about the exciting things that are going to be happening in our Splash Bash Committee. So again, thank you, Dave.
I really appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you so much.
We're going to get that pool open one day.
Yeah. Okay. You're on, Pam.
Okay, I'd just like to thank Joyce Worrell for, for, for all that great information. And yes, I'm Pam Light. I'm the new chair of the Splash Bash this year. So I'm new on the block, but we're working really good at it. I'd like to share with you our, our new flyer for the Splash Bash this year, and we will be holding that June first at the Kodiak Room. And we are going to be doing a roaring twenties. So people should come dressed, the costume. Of course, there will be a prize for the best costume, and we have some other events.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to win.
Oh, of course. I don't know. I've seen Linda's costume, so I, I don't know. I think you have a challenge there. Tickets will be available April first. think you have a challenge there. Tickets will be available April 1st and they will be at the Ironworks Boutique and Hayden's Pharmacy. And I've had Katie's chocolates. She's also offered to help sell tickets. So April 1st, again, the tickets will be available and all the flyers will start coming out on all, anybody that wants to advertise for us. We have, of course, the thing being the Roaring Twenties will be the guys in malls. We'll have good music. We will also be having some surprises. So everybody is to bring lots of change in their pockets because, you know, this is the Roaring Twenties, so you just never know, you know, you could, might have to, to hand over all that change. So based on that, I think that, again, I'd like to present this beautiful flyer that we made. And have I covered everything, Joyce?
I still.
I think we've done very well. So, oh, donations, 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 of course. We are accepting donations, whether, I think Linda's in charge of that. So you would contact her or any of us to accept donations. Thank you very much for your time and I hope to see you all at the, at the splash.
Thanks again. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. So there's a motion and a second to accept the donation of $12,000 from the Splash Bash. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks again. Next one is the biodigester project. We talked about this. This was a, several years ago, we looked at doing a biodigester out at the Ag Park or at the wastewater treatment plant. And we came in, we are one of 12, 10 projects throughout the United States. It was a pick to go to the second round for funding, but we didn't get picked as the number one. So we didn't get the funding for it. Just recently, we were called and asked if we wanted to be part of the state plan to do this kind of, same kind, same project, basically. And we're presented with a, a letter of interest that we needed to send to the state to commit to this project. There was some back and forth with our attorney, attorneys to make sure that we had proper language in there that gave us an out of something, you know, you know how these projects.
Unforeseen happens.
Yes, unforeseen. So, and there was a lot of back and forth. Right now, I think they're close to getting the language. So what I'm asking is just for if the, when the attorney approves it, it sounds like they today pretty much reached an agreement, but it hasn't been written out. But I would like just to have permission for me to sign it when our attorney says this, this agreement's good. And basically, it says that we're hosting, the state runs the whole thing. They're paying for the digester. They're installing it. They're actually operating it for like five years, all on them. They're doing everything to get this thing up and running. And so there's very little commitment from us besides some, well, we got to get the language, the agreement.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
It's a big thing. But anyway, our attorneys, they're working on that. So I would just like to be able to sign it if our attorney gives final approval. So I've just asked for permission to sign it with, with attorneys.
I second. John moot approval.
So it's been moved and seconded to allow me to sign the letter when we get the attorney's approval? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Has the potential to be a, well, you were talking about food waste and how, how that just.
Yeah.
That's exactly what this will, this will be a regional, it's like 300 tons a year of food waste and stuff this will take and turn into energy and fertilizer. So it could be a great thing for our whole community. We have three arts grants that we need to approve. The first one is a creative district capital grant to fund Tonino City Park Art Walk in the amount of $21,120.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the arts grant in the amount of $21,121, $120. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Passes. The second arts grant is for the, to fund the library mural project in the amount of $5,840.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve, to accept the arts grant for the library mural in the amount of $5,840. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, I got to take a drink of water. My throat is.
This, this one, the creative district grant, capital grant for, what is that for? The arts? What is it?
Which one are you talking about?
The last one, the last.
Number 12.
That was for the library mural?
No, no, the next one.
Oh, the next one?
It's what?
Wash dot signage on the freeway.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah. So the third one is a capital grant to fund the wash dot signage in the amount of $7,500.
Move, move approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the creative grant for wash dot signage in the amount of $7,500. Is there any discussion?
Do we know what the signage is going to be? Have we seen the design?
The green, it'll be just like the green state, wash dot signs.
It's a creative district sign that they have. Next, next.
Creative district logo on it. Yeah, there's one in Olympia pointing out there, creative district on the freeway. So next time you go through, going north, you can watch.
So a signage on the freeway to kind of point, point people to, down here. So where did we leave off? We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here's the big one. Save the biggest for the last. We have finally put together a purchase and sale agreement for the property acquisition. So 60-plus acres that we're, got a grant to purchase. So the motion is to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the 60-plus acre park addition.
And this is something we talked about. We already know what it's all about.
Yes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the park addition. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is a great one. When we talked about our, our trails and all those kind of things, this is, this is going to make it just incredible. And thank you, Jessica, for all the work and everybody else that's done work on that. That's, it's been a, been a project. No resolutions, no ordinances, reports, so we'll go back.
The only one left is the legislature and it's over.
Legislature, yeah. It's over.
It's done.
Oh, good.
Did I miss a museum? Okay, yep. Come on.
I think you said it before she got.
If you haven't been on toninodeepomuseum.com to look at the new audio walking tour, please check it out. A lot of research went into it. It, it has, it has it written. It has a historical photo of each building. It has more buildings than the sand, the original Sandstone Walking Tour had. So it has more of the history of the historic district. And one, one of the things that inspired me was my dad. So he is, has a cochlear implant, but he also is getting, his sight's getting where he can't read very easily anymore. So I wanted to do something that was accessible for people, that gave them options to do the tour, even if they weren't able to see, to read, they could listen to it. So, and then I wanted it to be a really nice recording. So Rob Newgard did the recordings and my dad listened to the tour and he said he was able to understand every word. So he worked really hard on enunciating, enunciating when he did his recordings. So check it out. I think it's, it's really wonderful. And if you find mistakes in it, it's so easy for me to go through and update it and change it. And we could even rerecord something. So there's that. We have a historical, oh, first tomorrow, we're hosting South Sound Heritage Association at the museum. So it's the regional meeting. They're all coming to the museum. If anybody's interested in sitting in on that, that's at 10:30 tomorrow. And then next week at 6 o'clock, we have a historical society meeting. And then at 7 o'clock, we have the history talk that we're partnering with the library. So this is kind of a library report too. So this is through Humanities Washington and it's brought to you by the Timberland Regional Library and the South Hurson County Historical Society. It's called, and it has pockets, "The Battle for Women's Clothing Equity." So I think what it's about is just how as, they battled to have clothing that was more functional. It really, you know, clothing that wasn't functional kind of kept them from being able to engage in a lot of activities in society and to be more useful, clothing had to change over time. So I think it's a history about that. So you're all welcome. That's free. Tell your friends. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. Okay, it's time for public comment number two. Come on, Joyce. I know you have something you want to talk about.
You know, I wasn't prepared to speak in the chamber. Is that why you're talking about that?
No, anything, whatever's on your mind. Do you want to talk about the chamber?
This is public.
Public comment, yeah.
Absolutely. How many of you said that? I just really liked to hear the whole of my sign.
I know. I know.
Hello, I'm Trudy Burnham. Live out off at Lake, no, I don't. I live at McIntosh Lake.
I was going to say.
I'm flustered.
I was going to ask her when she moved to.
No, 26 years I've been the same address. Anyway, I just want to really thank you all. I'm very emotional. Just thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks, Trudy.
Okay, I think that is our announcements. Anybody announcements? Okay, if there's nothing else, we adjourn the meeting.
I'm going to make a motion.
I was waiting for that.